Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. I guess we're ready to start our city council meeting. Today's date is January 2nd, 2019, the very first one of the new year. And it's six o'clock PM. Again, I'd like to welcome all of you here. I've asked Donna Gay if she would do what for us this evening.
Dear my father, thankful for this opportunity we have to meet together in Payson City. We're thankful that we live in this time and place where we can meet together and have the freedom to make decisions that affect our community and each other. And we ask that thy spirit would be here with us, that we can keep a friendly atmosphere and be kind and thoughtful and understanding of other people's views. And we can accomplish the things that we need to, as you mean, say these things in any of those suns just crazy.
Thank you, Donna. For those that don't know, Donna is our head librarian for Payson City. So, thank you very much. Oh, yes, Ted Bates Award winner. Woo-hoo. Okay, I'll ask Councilwoman Christensen to lead us into place.
May I raise my hand? This place is mine. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, Councilwoman Christensen. Consent agenda, number one, approval of the December 19, 2018 city council meeting and redevelopment agency meeting. Also, proclamation for Cowboy Poetry Week. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion and we approve the consent agenda.
Third second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Quote, "See, public forum. Anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Time limit is three minutes, less if you can." So, we'll go to that point. Anyone would like to take advantage of the public forum, please do so. Okay, not seeing anybody making that walk up here. We'll go ahead and go to staff reports.
Mayor and council members public, we had a quieter month last month, which was good for the holidays, I guess. We had 77 arrests, 142 offenses, 96 citations, sorry, I'm all slow down. 114 violations, 982 calls for service, three DUIRS, 172 traffic stops, and forty traffic accidents. So, a little few hundred calls shy last month, so pretty quiet.
Always good.
So, yeah, say thanks for the dinner, dude. I appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I thought I'd give you a snow update. I looked at it Monday, I didn't look at it today, but we were about 126% of normal on precipitation and about 98% on snow water equivalent as of Monday. And I'm sure what this cold has been, I don't think that's just melted.
That's wonderful.
So, we're at least just a little above average or right at average, so hopefully it'll keep up and we'll make it through another good year.
So, everything I see, we're the highest in the Provo Green district is Payson.
Yeah, I've noticed like over the years, if the storms come in a certain direction, it kind of funnels and then we just get it all day long. Hopefully it continues and we'll have a good spring and it'll come down slow enough. Hopefully, that'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you, Travis. Good news. Any other staff that feel like you need to come? Don, you're gonna come down. Ted Bates Award winner again.
I just wanted to let all of you know and the public know that we're closed until the 22nd while we're remodeling. I don't know, yeah, I guess it is remodeling. And thank you very much to the city and to you for appropriating funds for new carpet, which we really did need. And it's gonna look fantastic, so we're excited. And we thought, well, if we're gonna do that in my little paint, end of the wall. So, if you want to come and peek in, we'd be happy to have you peek in or my cell phone number's on that list and you can call me. I'd be happy to walk you through, like, know what we're working on. It's exciting to be there and feel the change and the energy. So, let me know. And if you have any questions, give me a call.
Certainly support you, Donna. And again, the Ted Bates Award, it shows that respect that we have for you.
Thank you.
Don't mean to embarrass you, but I did. Okay, doesn't look like any other staff is taking advantage of the time, so we'll move on to council, starting with Councilwoman.
We've had the wonderful holidays, now we came back to work. I hope everyone's had the wonderful holidays that I did. I appreciate my council members and the mayor for everything they do. And thank you, Dave, for your personal delivery today. I just wanna thank all of you that work for us because you're working for the city, not just for us, and you're doing your best, I can see that. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say, Jack, we'll do the same sentiments. We work with some really great people and I think we forget sometimes to publicly thank the people that I work with up here. We have, I get asked a lot how city council is going and how the city's going, and it always depends on who you talk to. Some people like what we're doing and some people don't. But I think we have a really good group here that works together really well. We don't always agree, but we are able to have civil discussions and work through things. And it's been really a pleasure to work with all these people and somebody's story about anything I know. It was Linda, wasn't it? She used to be missing it. Couple other things. This is just me, it's not that big a deal and it probably shouldn't be a city thing, but usually the first part of January is really cold and miserable and people get a little discouraged. And we've already shut off our Christmas lights. I think we have to keep them up till the 10th or 14th or something. That sad seasonal affective disorder is a real thing that people have. It's when my brother stays in California. But yeah, keep your Christmas lights and spread the cheer through the darkest part of the year.
You don't have to take them down, so that'd be...
Yeah, and you don't have to take them down in cold, so you know, it's trying on since there are... One last thing, actually two more things. We have a lot of great people in our community. And I should've printed it out and brought this out, but sometimes the online social media forums are kind of negative places to go. But the other day I noticed that somebody slid off the road, it was early in the morning, and he needed help. And he reached out and said, hey, I'm stuck, can anybody help? And there were five or six or seven residents that said, I'll be there in a minute. And they went down there and pulled him out. And they didn't know him, and he just reached out to random people. And we have residents in our community that are willing to go and help someone else in the drop of a hat. It was really heartwarming. And if we had a Team Payson thing, I'd give them our Team Payson award. And then one last thing, more on the business side of things. I think we maybe want to look into putting up a flashing crosswalk light at the high school. I don't know if we've looked into that at all, but in the morning and after school, it gets really busy, especially when it's darker in the morning and kids are crossing those streets. And high school kids don't always drive the most aware that they should. And I really think we ought to look at something there, whether it's just the flashing light button they can push or sidewalk, I don't know. Anyway, sidewalk, yeah. Thank you.
I'd like to echo just real quickly the thanks that I feel for the city staff and workers, also the support I feel from the general public. I'm very honored to be the mayor, looking forward to three more years during my current term. And I'm proud to represent Payson. And please, if people have views they want to express, I'm more than happy to listen as I'm sure any of the councils is too. I'd like to thank collectively and individually the council, they are really good to work with. We can disagree, but that's okay. And we work well together, so thank you.
I just want to echo what everyone else has said. I don't know how many residents know the time and the effort of the Payson employees put in and what they do for the city. And I appreciate them so much. And I want them to know that, especially Brad and the police force. When you hear about how many that he does in a month, I'm just amazed. I wish there was more public that was here that could hear that. I don't know how many go out and look at our council meetings and can see that and hear that. But I so appreciate everyone that works for the city and these folks up here, too. It's been a real pleasure to work with them, and I'm looking forward to the new year.
I just, I think Payson's had a great year this year and through our last year, 2018. And I'd just like to thank the mayor and the council and the staff and the residents. I think we've had a lot of input this year from residents, I think that's really good. And I look forward to 2019. I think it's gonna be a better year. We put a lot of building blocks in place, working on our general plan, master plan, and just being prepared. Last year, we had 78 new houses, building permits, that's a lot more than we've ever had, and 230-some-on house tops, kind of apartments. So, we're moving forward and so everybody worked together and let's have a great year. Thanks.
Well, I'm the last, as usual, with nothing left to say, but...
I'll start, get it.
No, then I don't have any excuses. It's good, mayor. No, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to learn and to grow and to understand how a city works. There's a lot more to it than most people can understand and relate to. So, I've finished my first year, I really have a new appreciation for it all. And as I was driving around over my Christmas holiday, all my time off, and seeing all the city workers plowing and removing the garbages and doing the things that they do to keep our city looking beautiful, I appreciate that. Appreciate always having a dry road to drive on and the safety that comes with that. And I appreciate that. And looking forward to the new year and moving forward. And like the mayor says, we can't do anything that somebody doesn't mention. And sometimes hearing the good stuff helps us move forward, too. But we'll listen to the bad as well, so anyway, thank you.
Turn my mic on. Okay, we'll move on to number, well, we don't have any, we have any scouts that are here tonight? If we do, we want to give you a certificate. Doesn't look like we do. So, we'll go from three to number four. Community's a Care Mayor's Youth Recognition Award, and have Kim Leffler come up.
Okay, and speaking about hearing about the good things that happen, that's what these are. Because a lot of times when we hear about youth, we only hear about bad things that they do. But the Youth Mayor Recognition Award is about hearing about the good things that our youth do in our community, because we do have a lot of good youth in our community, so that's the reason we do this, is to hear about them and the good things that they are doing in our community. So, our first one will be Trista Larson, so she'll come up. And she is from... Payson Junior High, stop. Like, totally lost my place here. So, she's in the ninth grade, and Trista organized a donation raiser in her church last year for orphans in Mexico. And so, they brought in many sacks and items, and she would've done it this year, but another family in her church apparently did it. So, anyway, she apparently has a lot of teachers that really like her because I kept getting emails all day long from different teachers. And so, is it Mrs. Patricia? Did I say her name? Okay, good. Said, "Trista is very observant and offers to help me frequently in teaching, in my teaching efforts during class, such as offering to help pass out papers. She's also very good and a very good and expressive musician." And Mrs. Mauer said that Trista is a positive example and a shining light in the school. She's kind and compassionate to other students. Trista's very motivated to help other people and do well in her classes. Is respectful and a wonderful student. Mrs. Purcell said, "Trista has won Sudoku many times this year." And Mrs. Gillie said, "Trista is a dynamite student. She's hardworking and diligent in getting her work done. She is responsible and mature to ask questions when she has them. She is well-mannered and a great example to her peers. Trista is a model student and I'm lucky to have her in class. She is very deserving of this award." Mr. Smith said, "Trista is a hard worker and very self-motivated. In addition, she's always willing to help those around her and takes the initiative to lend a hand when she sees a need without someone else asking her." Mrs. Layroom said, "Trista is also very considerate of others, always extremely respectful and honest. She completes her work without fail." Mrs. Laverne said, "I had Trista Larson last year honor's math. She always went the extra mile to make sure she understood the math correctly. And on our project where we built amusement park rides, she made a beautiful and wonderful presentation. She is responsible, knowledgeable, kind, and a great example to her peers." So, I thought that was beautiful. And they kept apologizing when they sent me emails, but I thought that was fabulous. Thank you. Okay, our next one is Chesney Ortega, and this is from Mount Nebo. And I know Chesney, so this was kind of fun to see her name come through, because Chesney also serves on my youth court. And so, if you, those of you who don't know what youth court is, and when we do have youth care in Payson that do get in trouble, they have an option of pleading guilty to what they've done and not going to juvenile court and coming to our youth court and being judged by a jury of their peers and getting a disposition. And so, Chesney is one of the members of my youth court. And they serve once a month and they come at 5:30, and we often don't leave until nine o'clock at night. And this is all voluntarily, and I appreciate them, and they are hardworking and diligent. So, this is what her school had to say about her. "And Chesney is one of the most sincere and caring individuals I have ever met. She comes to class every day eager and ready to learn. I have seen her countless times reach out to her classmates when they're down and need some help. She is considerate to others and is incredibly insightful. Chesney is extremely talented and has lots of potential. Chesney has been an ideal student in biology class and an exemplary example to her fellow students. Some of her attributes are her abilities to overcome challenges that she encounters and how she not only overcomes them, but how she learns from her experiences to grow and improve. Chesney also has many natural leadership qualities. She is very inclusive with all of the people that I see her interact with. She has a true gift of lifting those around her and making them felt valued and important. I can always count on Chesney to set a good example of academic integrity and high moral ethics for her peers, not only in, but also out of the classroom. Chesney is a true asset to Mount Nebo Junior High and to all those that she interacts with. Chesney is a fantastic student and I am privileged to have her in my class. She has a work ethic that is hard to come by and recognizes the good in everyone around her. Chesney is kind and supportive of her peers. I enjoy Chesney's bubbly personality and the positive attitude she brings with her to class every day. Chesney is one of those students, a teacher, that as a teacher, you never forget. She has a heart of gold and is kind to everyone. Chesney encourages others in class and helps them out if they are struggling with a concept in PE. Chesney is a wonderful example of what the mayor's award is for. I cannot think of a more deserving person to receive this recognition. I could tell you about all the natural leadership that Chesney exhibits, or I could expound on her obvious intelligence, but the most impressive quality that Chesney displays is her humanity. She is a great leader because she cares about those feelings and she accepts people as they are while lifting them to their better versions of themselves. And that is why the student council would deter to be their president. She represents the best of her generation." And then from Payson High School is Alyssa Baker. I'm gonna tell Alyssa, or Alyssa on the spot just a little bit, because they didn't give me a very long write-up, but they told me a few things about her, so I'm gonna make her kind of expound on a few of those things. So, Alyssa is a great student and a great person. She's currently a senior at Payson High School and a very, she's a very dedicated and conscious student. She is always, they put, well, almost always hard at work and is also very kind and helpful to those around her. When you see her in the hall or in class, she will generally have a very positive attitude, even though she has a very difficult holistic workload, which includes four college concurrent enrollment classes. Woo-hoo. Along with that, she's also very involved in her community and other extracurricular events and activities. So, I wanted you to tell us what those are. He didn't tell me, he just put that, so I'm like, tell us what those community and extracurricular activities are.
Okay, so, I'm a National Honor Society officer, so we just like to plan activities for the school and like we, we do, there's four different pillars in NHS, there's character, service, I know two more, I can't remember what they are. But so, we do activities according to those four pillars. And then parents, if you want to come up and stand right here and you can pick, we will go into that chair. Give you a warning. Well, all of you, they're up and down there.
Carl, I don't want to single you out, did you have anything you wanted to bring before us? I know you came in a little bit later.
Sorry about that, mayor and council.
Okay.
Couple little update on the pickleball courts. They are looking to try to get the fence on and the sidewalks poured, depending on the weather now being so cold. They do have some normal blankets, but other than that, we told them to hold out on that. We don't want them to jeopardize the concrete. We'll just make sure it gets in right and build from that point. As far as youth sports and activities, we are taking registrations for tumbling and gymnastics and dance the next term, starting now in the winter, so we're gearing up and they'll all start next week. And just for council to know, our youth basketball starts Saturday. We do, we have more people registered this year than last year, including the older kids, so that's a real good plus. We've got 12 teams and 10 teams, I believe, in the older leagues, and that's good to be at those numbers. So, we're happy to do that. Skiing program also is this month with Sundance. If you didn't know, we have that in the future. We do have skiing with Sundance ski lessons, so next year you can sign up and get in that program. We do have a few on a waiting list this year, so thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Just for those, just for those that, those don't know where that pickleball court's going to be, it's a southeast corner of Memorial Park where the tennis courts used to be. They will no longer be there, there'll be pickleball courts there. Very excited about that. Okay, we'll move on, chamber business of the month. Jade, or you here, I don't, I haven't seen you. Oh, there you go. Come on in, Ty.
Doug, come on up. There is no business of the month for the chamber. Actually, Doug and I are here to take over. No, we, I...
Is that a hostile takeover or what?
Yeah, I don't know.
It's friendly.
No, actually, I'll be serving as president of the Chamber Commerce this year. Those that don't know, know me, Ty Jones from the Insurance Center. My office is on Main Street. And Doug Carter with Berkshire Hathaway Real Estate, he is president-elect. So, that means he'll be president next year. So, we are the leadership of the chamber now. And forgive us for not having the business of the month elected two days into the year, but...
You're forgiven.
Thank you, thank you. But we are super excited to work with Payson. We're setting some goals as leadership. We have a meeting this Friday. We have an exciting inaugural ball, and you don't have to be a member to attend, you just have to purchase tickets. But anyway, just to let you know, Josh Romney, son of Mitt Romney, is coming to speak. He is one of the keynote speakers. The other keynote speaker is Lieutenant Governor Spencer Cox. And they'll be addressing us, and that is January 24th. And we don't have a time set yet, but we have a venue. That's gonna be at the Benches Memorial. And so, we're really excited for that. Should be a nice event. We're having some great food catered. We're gonna hand out some awards to deserving businesses and citizens of the community. And of course, we'd invite Payson City to come and support, but we do look forward to working with everyone on the business side. We've been really blessed with a good economy, and we're seeing a lot more businesses start up. And here in Payson, that's important, we want to show them our support, remind people to shop local. And anyway, we're just excited to be here. And any questions or concerns, smart comments from Linda.
I'm just wondering if, I'm just wondering if the chamber has some plans to get our thing covered as you're coming into Payson.
Oh, the sign?
The sign, the thing, yeah. The sign.
Right now, it is, it is the Tour of Utah.
Right.
And we do need to... So, just to update you on what's going on with that, we've had a change in our director from Shelley Thompson to Andra Sethwell. And basically trying to get everything together on work. We do have plans in the work, it's just executing it. And so, that is one of our goals, to get done as quick as possible. I know one goal we have is to report more to the council, because Payson City is a huge contributor for funding, and we appreciate that. And the chamber would not be able to do what... And the Chamber would not be able to do what it does without your support. Any other questions or concerns I can address?
I just have a statement. It's a pleasure to work with you. I've worked with you quite a little bit already. And I believe we've got a good working relationship. I know that will continue.
Yeah.
We had this same thing with Jade, so we're very excited for the future.
And Doug, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Teresa, do you have something?
Well, I was just gonna say, I know that with Andrea coming in the way she did, like she just came in and she just went full force. And the thing is, when she came in, there's like so many things here at the end of the year that she was trying to take care of that... She's trying to play catch-up now, and I realize that, but I was telling you, I'm really impressed with her. I can't believe the things that she's done. And I didn't know about this, Ty. I'm glad that you guys are where you're at. I was sick that morning, so...
Oh, no, so to let you know, Dina Raven was President-elect. She was supposed to be President.
Yeah.
And she, she got ill. And so I kinda was serving as treasurer and I stepped up into her role and helped. And they said, well, since you're here, we'll just make you President. So that's, that's kinda how I felt.
So that was kind of a hostile takeover, wasn't it?
Yeah, I guess so.
That's right.
Yeah, we appreciate everything. Appreciate to see the youth so involved. So thank you for that. But unless there's anything else, we'll...
I think Doug has some. 24th, that's a Sunday, is that correct?
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, I've seen it February, okay.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it is the 24th. Okay, I didn't, I didn't...
I had my debate calendar on, and my recent term is the 23rd, and like...
Yeah, so it will be on Thursday. So, yeah, it's gonna be in the evening sometime. And great, we're looking at reducing prices for the tickets. And it should be a popular event. There's plenty of road conventions on. And we're excited to have Lieutenant Governor Cox and Mr. Romney come address us.
If you guys haven't heard, we miss Josh. Josh is really involved in the growth and stuff of the state of Utah. And he's really gonna try to dial in and give us some extra insight as far as the growth and what's happening here and this area from... He actually is involved in a mortgage company as well as on some of the other boards. And so he's got a lot of insight that he's gonna share with us that night.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to number six. Presentation of Financial Audit for Fiscal Year 2017-2018. Sarah.
Okay, so we finished our financial audit. And Ben Perops is here from Gilbert Stuart CPA. So I'm gonna turn the time over to him. Dave's handing out the financial audit to you, so you can follow along with him.
Thank you. My name is Ben Perops. I'm with the CPA firm of Gilbert Stuart, located in Provo, Utah. And grateful for the opportunity to have worked with Sarah and help put these financials together and for us to audit the financials for Paceon City. Just wanna express thanks to Sarah and her crew for providing us with the necessary information as we spent some time down here and going through the financial records of the year. So in our financial audit, our opinion is on page one and two. I just wanna read the opinion on the paragraph. Second one to the, up from the bottom. Says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of Paceon City as of June 30, 2018, and the respective changes in financial positions and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year and any important for the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." Basically, the city's receiving an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can receive on financial aspect for the audit. I know we had, I think she'd sent this out. So you've had a chance possibly to review it. Before I dive into anything, do you have any questions in specific areas you'd like me to address or anything like that? If not, then I'm just gonna highlight a few things so I don't take much time. In this report, generally, the first, the management discussion and analysis, which is the first 13 pages after our report, just discusses more of a summary of what's transpired in the city, maybe purchases and then shows comparable between prior year and the current year that was audited. That's prepared by Paceon City or Sarah in the reports. Our basically report financial statements end again on page 14. And 14 basically combines, it's like balance sheet combines. It's the net position of the city and it combines all their general governmental funds and the proprietary enterprise funds, business-type activities. And just shows the net position for the overall year. Page 15 is the statement of activities, and that just breaks it down by the various funds and both the governmental activities and then the business-type activities that could be broke down, the water, electric, sewer, solid waste. Then the others is the general government and then the different departments and expenditures associated with that. Page 16 through 22 basically is the financial of the different... One is the governmental funds, and then the other one is the enterprise or business-type funds. It just shows the balance sheet. And then there's a reconciliation that ties that balance sheet back to the state of the net position back on page two. Because the governmental funds in, on page 16 does not reflect the infrastructure and the debt necessarily associated with it. So it converts it, so it's more like a business type, which is then reported on page two and three, or page three and four of the state of the net positions. And it shows the additional assets that we've added to it and the debt that's associated with, that you may have. Page 20 is basically the operations of your proprietary funds, which is the water, electric, sewer, and the non-major enterprise funds, which then would be... The ambulance, the storm drain, the gulf, and those items. And then after those statements, one statement I always like to look at is the cash flow. It generally shows how much cash is being generated by the operations. That's on page 22. Page 23 through 50, well, 55 is the ones which help support those documentations. A couple of items I'll just highlight briefly is found on page 41 and 42, and then also on page 46. Page 41 is basically shows your capital assets. That shows the capital assets that have been added to the city's, both the governmental fund and the business-type activities. Showing that this year, we've added about three-quarters of a million dollars in the infrastructure, roads, and stuff like that. Part of that is just contributed by developers with new subdivisions and stuff like that. And then the city has to maintain. The other is some improvements in machinery and equipment there in the governmental fund. And then page 46 basically shows the bonds and the debt payment schedule. It just shows, just sort of highlighted, we paid off approximately $2 million of our bonds this year. And still is able to, we're still able to meet those obligations and stay on top of those things. Couple other items is in the back. There's two reports. One is an internal, internal control report. We don't, we don't give an opinion, but we also look at the internal controls of the city and make sure they're functioning properly, there's no issues. We didn't see anything, just note that, I noted that this year that we did hire a... Separate the duties of the treasurer and the receivables.
Utility building.
Yeah, utility building, which is a great control to have. And so that was an addition that was, that was good to see. The other report on page 69 and 70 is our state compliance report. The state of Utah has different laws and regulations that each government entity, cities particular, have to follow and abide by. And this year, we looked at various things on page, first part of it, that shows of the stuff that we tested. And then in there, we did have a couple of findings that's related on this letter here that was given. One of the findings I'll just briefly highlight is the general fund in the... It's supposed to not exceed 25% of your revenues. And we did, we were over that by almost $100,000. We've had that finding in the past, and we're getting that back down. So I almost call it a good finding. And you always wanna have plenty of money and not be in the negative. So we're doing good in that respect.
I have a quick question on that. What does the state think of that when you, when you do that two years in a row? Do they slap their hand, or they just say...
Yeah, they may send you a letter and say, what are you doing? What kind of resolution are you going to bring that back down? And I think we've taken some steps in giving your capital improvements and things like that. It's helped to go along with that, so.
We'll do a budget amendment like we did last year. We transferred $1,900,000. It's hard when I project where we're gonna be at the end of the year. I project that all departments are gonna spend everything that's been given to them budget-wise. But then a lot of departments don't spend everything, so I have excess. But we'll transfer more to the budget. And with the ball fields that we have to build, I'm sure we can take care of that, so, yeah.
The last issue on there had to do with the JP Court. And that just explains basically that they were apparently getting credit in excess of what was ordered and have the proper support for it. So they'll do the proper kind of requirements, so. Any other questions or anything you wanna highlight, Sarah, that I might miss? Any questions?
I got a few questions. One is on our investments, because we have quite a bit of money right now. A lot of it just goes into a state account, if you understand. What kind of returns are we getting? Are there other ways we can look at investments? Do we get audited, how, what our investments are? How does that work?
A lot of your funds are in what's in the public state treasures. It's called the PTIF, Public Treasurers Fund. Generally, as for, it's probably the safest and securest, I mean, fund out there in gaining interest. I think right now, it's around 3% or 4%. It's always a lot higher than what you would have in a bank. And it's, and that, so that's generally good. I haven't seen any issues with it. I know when interest were really low, they were still 1% or 2% compared to half a percent or even anything from the bank.
Those must have been bonds then, must be, since it's not volatile, so...
Yeah, I would guess so. I mean, I don't think they put it in, it's high risk or provalutary in that respect, so.
So they have to follow the money management act, so it's very strict. It has to be very safe. We have also invested with Morton Investment Company. We have about $4 million with them. And typically, they outperform the PTIF. But because we're on an uphill swing, the PTIF is outperforming Morton despite a cement, not very much. But if we start to have a downturn, that's when Morton will have a higher interest rate. So we have utilized Morton, but we're very limited on how we can invest our funds.
Who makes that decision in the city? Is it a, do you have a committee that makes that decision? Or one person makes, how's that decision made? Where are we investing our money?
The treasurer, Dave, and me.
I have a couple more questions. On roads, if you go to, I think, page 11 and 12. I'm hoping it's in the book that way, or it's on the one that I... Yeah, okay. One place you have a graph, I don't know where that is. It just says like 1.9% of our roads are, you know, probably fail in three years. Where is that? How do you come up with that? And that's not on these pages, I don't know what page that's on.
Yeah, that's...
On 50, maybe 58, 56, 58?
How that's figured, so about two years ago, Kent hired IWorks to come out, and they grade their streets. They go and walk them and look at them, and they grade them. And they put it into the IWorks system. So this is based on all that information. Kent is going to be doing another audit on that to make sure everything's been there accurately. But according to Nestor and Kent, having a nine-point, I remember that number, that's a really good service of life, Rachel and Hotte Road. So Nestor was very impressed. I was talking to Nestor, was impressed with that Rachel, because I didn't know whether that was good or bad.
Did he go out and look at our roads? Did he agree?
Well, I think if you go everywhere else, I mean, Paceon's roads are pretty, look like American sports.
I do tell people that, we have people complain all the time. If you get off the main roads, and most cities have troubles with their roads.
Or Salem, if you go down to Salem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Salem's got bad roads.
So it's a constant problem for every city. But that's why Kent hires IWorks, because he doesn't want anyone to say, you're just messing with the numbers, you're putting whatever to make yourself look better. That's an independent evaluation.
So on the 1.9%, does Kent have a plan for that? That 1.9% is supposed to fail in the next three years?
Yes.
Do we have a written plan?
Yes.
Good. The other thing I noticed, and I'm trying to understand this, because I thought we put more in roads. And 2018, our budget and expenditures for maintenance of roads was about half of what it has been.
Yeah, and that, and part of that reason is, is part of the amount was actually capitalized and not spent. And so that's why that's a lot lower. We actually improved about, it looked like $250,000 that we, instead of showing as an expense, we capitalized it. And that's the difference. Otherwise, you'd be pretty much close to the same amount for that year.
If you look at that paragraph, it says capital expenditures.
Right, yeah, yeah. I saw that, but I just didn't know how it all works, so...
No, because that does, that's the big change in the swing there. So that's the reason behind that.
I think it's great, it's earned great audit, and it's doing a great job. And only two findings, and one of them we all, we knew about, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other question?
I think we're okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go on to Action Items D. Action Items Resolution Development Agreement for Petit Niquee Coop Subdivision Located South of 500 North Between 400 East and 500 East. Jill, you ready?
I just gotta switch.
Okay.
Okay, I learned my lesson from the last council meeting.
Okay, I learned my lesson from the last council meeting, because Council member Hewlett had asked me some very specific questions about.
Sorry.
No, about the conversation that staff had with the applicant with some changes to the development agreement. So I have a short presentation on this to explain some of the things that we've discussed over the last few weeks, um, to get this development agreement into your packet. And we were actually discussing some of the terms of this agreement with the applicant even at four, four-thirty this afternoon. And so I want to go over those real quick, because there has been some slight, um, changes to the text, uh, that we've discussed with the applicant today. I think the, um, the general outcome is the same, uh, but we felt like the, the text of the agreement needed to change for interpretation reasons. So I wanted to go through those real quick. Um, as I mentioned, we, we have put this development agreement together, we've, um, submitted it to the applicant, or gave it to the applicant, um, a few weeks ago. He submitted some, um, comments and suggestions, we had, um, some continuing discussions on that. Um, and then even with another review of the city attorney today, we felt like there needed to be some additional changes. So I'll go over those briefly, um, and then answer any questions that you may have. And then the applicant, Jerry Robinson, is here, if you have any specific questions for him. I mean, he does not have a, um, a prepared presentation, he's just here for questions. So the Petite Nick Cope development, let me go back real quick. This is an infill project, so it's in, um, it's vacant property that's in an existing neighborhood. Um, it's located on the northeast part of Payson, next to Barnett Elementary. I see a Barnett Elementary that is actually there to the left of the screen, uh, their site. Uh, the Alice Court subdivision is to the north, and then there are, um, homes that have been built throughout the years, you know, to the south and to the east. Uh, but it's a thirteen-unit development, it is five single-family homes and four twin-home structures, so the total of thirteen units. The overlay zone has been applied to this in order to give the applicant the density and to get the attached units, the twin-home structures in this development, to modify the roadway widths and various other modifications, um, that are necessary with infill projects, because you do have the built environment around you, and it is a little challenging to, to develop some of these parcels. Advocates receive preliminary final, um, plot approval, and so the, the last step, uh, with the city council before the applicant moves forward to the construction stage is to get approval of the development agreement. So, um, in section thirty, uh, subsection C, we had to make some changes to how we refer to phasing. Um, there's, there's been, when we first put this agreement together, there was a lot of overlap between phasing for improvements such as infrastructure and utilities and roadways, and then landscaping and amenities and fencing and things like that. And so, um, we, we've definitely had to distinguish those, and we've made some additional changes. Uh, but the applicant is wanting to phase the project, um, not only for the infrastructure roadway and improvements, but also for the landscaping. So I wanted to go over those real quick. So it's what's being proposed here, so what is highlighted in, in the TAN, there is lots one, two, and five, they are all single-family lots. So it's what the applicant is proposing, and is what the text of the agreement will say, is that because those units, um, are located to existing roadways, so five hundred north and five hundred east already exist, and there is already infrastructure in those roadways. Uh, the applicant will be responsible for, um, putting in curbiter and sidewalk and asphalt tying and extending the laterals to those lots. Uh, but, um, all of the necessary safety, um, provisions are taking place, because there's an existing fire hydrant in, on the corner, and there's existing roads. And so it's what is proposed is that phase, um, because it's adjacent to those facilities, that building permits can be issued for those three lots uh, prior to the installation of the curbiter sidewalk and the asphalt tying. Um, so the agreement will say that it has to be done prior to the issuance of any occupancy permit. So if they start building one and five at the same time, that five is completed first, all of those improvements have to be done before any occupancy permit for those three lots, or for those three building paths there. Um, and then the other phase, uh, would be for lots three, for six through thirteen. And that, because it requires new utilities, new roadways, um, for that, that field that is there now, um, all improvements will be required prior to a certificate of occupancy for any of the units, and that's indicated in the green there. So the applicant doesn't know at this time if they're going to build seven first, or if they're going to build the twin home that makes up twelve and thirteen. Um, but, you know, we felt that tying it to any certificate of occupancy in that area is going to, um, incentivize the applicant to get all of the improvements in there for all of the lots, um, and try to minimize the impact, the construction impact, um, as far as utilities and roadways on some of those, um, homes that are being built. And then that is also going to require a new exhibit to the agreement. The applicant was kind enough to prepare on Monday, uh, this, this diagram, uh, to be shared tonight and to be included in the agreement to go along with that section reference there. So there's actually a, a graphic representation of the text, um, that, that further explains, uh, the phasing and at what point those infrastructure roadway improvements need to be completed. And then the landscaping phasing plan, because landscaping can be tricky, um, especially with, um, infill projects, because of just how the property is, is situated and how you access those properties, and some of these are attached units, they're twin homes. And so the applicant has, as you can see, he, see, as you can see here, he has carved out different phases. Most of it is by building, um, with the exception of lots six and seven, which are two single-family homes in that phase. But it just provides, um, an outline, um, for the development agreement to show that, you know, if an occupancy permit, if they're ready for, um, eight and nine, for example, that all of the improvements, um, including the landscaping, will need to be completed for, so those co-exciting mods, so. Anyway, so, so there's, there is a little bit of difference between the two. We will include these diagrams as exhibits to the agreement, so, um, any future owners, um, will be able to understand. And then the last, uh, changes that were made and discussed this afternoon was the residential design elements, uh, in section three, subsection A. Uh, there needed to be some additional clarification on building height. This is an infill project, we are putting this in the backyard areas of some homes. And so, um, through the approval process, um, you know, even comments made by, um, neighbors, there was a concern of having development in those backyard areas and privacy. And so the applicant has been very sensitive to that, um, and so we've even tweaked that a little bit more today to make sure that we have clarified, you know, at what point, um, you know, the finished grade, are we going to be measuring the height from? Is that done from the front of the building, or the back of the building? It's actually done from the front of the building. And then also the unit square footage, making sure that it is consistent with the approval that was granted by the planning efficiency council. Um, you know, particularly any square footage requirements that may have been discussed during the public meeting, you know, that the residents may have heard. Um, and then also making sure that it is consistent with, uh, the new overlay zone that was created for these infill projects. So those were, um, the focus points, uh, discussed between staff and the applicant, and even this afternoon. And staff would re, would request approval from the city council, um, with the modifications that are suggested tonight.
Any council discussion?
I have a handful of questions, but I don't know which are appropriate and which are not. So, is he responsible for the new walking path? Because I didn't see that as part of the.
Yes, the applicant is, and I believe the phasing plan is before any certificate of occupancy, the trail will be installed.
Okay. And I know when we looked at this before and approved the final flat, we had talked about discussing the possibility of getting that to attach to Fourth North. Um, either via jumping the ditch and coming across on Nevo School District property, or confronting the, the homeowner that is right there on Fourth North adjacent to the city.
We have talked about that internally with staff.
Okay.
It's probably not our, the responsibility of the applicant.
No, it's not, but it's one of the.
We discussed that, um, the idea of crossing the creek and going down the pathway that, um, Nevo School District has at the Barnett Elementary school site. We mentioned that to them at our last quarterly meeting, and they are open to, uh, the idea. Uh, they definitely wanted, they wanted to walk the side with, with staff, see where that crossing would take place, because there is, um, a little pop out of, of the building on that east side, and they don't want it to be too close to there with the windows, and. But they're definitely willing to explore the opportunity with staff.
And, and it may be worth confronting that homeowner that's there and saying, hey, this is the options we're looking at, because you may just take a little tidbit of his corner of his property, and he may be willing, at that point in time, to stop it from going right down the side of his property as it's proposed. Um, the other issue I have is the trees are very, very dense in there, and I would much, I'd, I'd like to see eighty percent of those trees torn out before the sidewalk goes in. Personally, I mean, that's where my kids go, that's where my kids play. Um, we lost bikes back there, we went looking for one of my son's bicycles that were stolen from that area, and there were five or six different bicycles that had been thrown over the fence, just kind of, it's really difficult. It's kind of a obscure spot, and then to put a six-foot fence up one side of it. I, I know it's bad south, north of there as well, but that south area is really, really dense.
And just as a little bit of clarification, um, the, the development agreement is, as it's written.
Right.
Is that, uh, the area that is from the trail west to the property line would be deeded to Payson City.
Okay.
So that property would be deeded to Payson City. The only thing that the applicant is, um, responsible for is installing the trail. I know we've had a conversation with Mark Highland about what needs to be done in that area. I'm not sure if Mark is, is looking at, at that as a project within that budget, um, or.
And I, I'm fine with that, I mean, if it's, if it's our responsibility, and that's like I said, I'm not sure it's the right spot to talk about it, but it's here. We're looking at it, we're about to grant this, this is our last little hurrah, and I didn't want it to slip through the cracks.
No, and it's great to.
And, and I'll tell you what, to lay a tree down before you put houses in is a really easy job. To do it after houses are in, it gets a little bit more expensive. So I like to, I like to put that cart before the horse, you know what I mean?
Well, I think even with the applicant, um, his responsibility to have that trail in before any certificate of occupancy, so even with one house being completed, um, that sort of pushes that cart in the direction of let's get it cleaned up.
Right.
You know, even if we haven't, if, you know, if we don't have the budget to do any ground cover or anything like that, let's at least, you know, clean up those trees, and there's probably a lot of fallen vegetation that probably needs to remove, but we'll, we'll definitely forward that to Mark and, and make sure that those conversations, coordination is, is done.
And that was the only other thing, and then he does have a storm drain retention pond that's about twenty feet above that in altitude, which I thought was kind of interesting, is that because they have to keep their water on-site, is that?
So they do have the, their stormwater requirement is they, they do have to retain it on-site.
Right.
Um, and so they have, uh, designed that basin into the landscape design and adjacent to some of the internal walkways into the development there.
All right, then that makes sense.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, then I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll re-improve resolution number zero-one, zero-two, two thousand nineteen, authorizing America to enter into a development agreement on behalf of Payson City between Payson City and, um, and the developer of the Petite Nick Cope subdivision with the modifications that have been discussed tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been, a motion's been made and it's been seconded, calls for a roll-covote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, that will move on to number two, preliminary plan, uh, and final flat approval of phase five, six, and seven of the villages at Arrowhead Park, a residential development located west of Arrowhead Trail at approximately fifteen hundred north. Are you still up, Jill?
Yep, it is still me. And we lost a lot of the public. I've got this grand presentation though, and I'll, I'll go through it, but we do have several representatives from the development team that are here tonight, so if you have any questions for them, um, so we'll introduce them in a moment. But, uh, the applicant is looking at approvals for phases five through seven, they've been working on these phases for, for quite some time. They've had, um, to take care of a lot of things unique to this site, and we'll go over those briefly. But, um, just to orient, uh, those that aren't familiar with the villages at Arrowhead Park, um, this is, uh, the location of this development, it's about ninety-five acres, that's located on the very north, northeast, I guess, parcel, uh, in Payson. And so actually, uh, there's a division between, uh, what's in Payson City and what's in Salem City, uh, with this, with this property. And so the applicant has received approval of phases one through four, um, and the installation of infrastructure off-site and on-site has commenced. So there are several features unique to the site, there's a lot of wetlands. Uh, wetlands is a new, um, challenge, um, at least for me, um, you know, with, we haven't seen a lot of development in some of these, some of these areas, and so it's been a little learning curve on my part, but I've got a lot of great staff that, that's there to help. Um, the Bear Creek channel goes through this development, um, it did require the extension of utilities. Um, as you can see, it's quite a bit away, distance away from, um, existing neighborhoods, and so there's a lot of, um, responsibility and expense of the applicant in order to get those, those utilities, um, extended out there. Uh, the applicant is installing a lift station, uh, that will be used on a temporary basis, um, for sewer, um, until the wastewater treatment plant for Salem City is constructed. Uh, we do have an agreement with Salem City in order for this development to be served by, uh, by their system long-term. Roadway improvements have to be done, Arrowhead Trail is an archer road, it's going to, it carries a lot of traffic now, it's going to carry a lot more traffic in the future, and even have an intersection, or it, it will even intersect with the new, um, proposed Nevo Beltway that will come off of Interstate fifteen. So it's really gonna, um, we're going to see a lot of changes in this area. Um, coordination with irrigation companies, the applicant has done a lot of work, um, reaching out to any irrigation companies in the area to, to make sure that their development will not impact any of their systems. Um, and then coordination with Salem City, as I mentioned, they'll be providing sewer for this, uh, development, uh, but they all, there will also be some connections to some of their local streets, and so we need to make sure that we have really good, uh, communication with our neighbors. Land use and, um, and density, this is the overall plan, uh, that was developed, um, from the densities that were, um, provided through the North Payson Adduction Agreement. And so the applicant put this rendition together, actually several renditions, you know, working through, um, several different iterations with the market, with city requirements and, and with the demand. Um, and so this, this is what we're looking at, that there on that bottom right-hand corner, that is five through, um, five through seven? Five through seven.
How many total phases are there?
So, well, there are, I'm not sure how many phases there are, because I think a lot of it's going to depend on market.
Okay.
Um, you know, I think even the applicants were, were surprised with how quickly they got to phases five through seven. I mean, because they've had a lot of interest, um, with the single-family and the townhome, uh, products in phases one through four. So as you can see, phases one through four have been approved, phases five through seven are highlighted there, and that is what the applicant is requesting approval of tonight. It includes eighty-five single-family dwelling lots. So that's just what I said, right there. So, um, to date, I mean, after they receive approval of this, to date they will have approval of two hundred and fifteen units. The overall, uh, number that, roughly, that they're looking at for the entire ninety-five acres is about six hundred and fifty units. So, so it's a, it's a very large development, big rate, um, addition to our community and our housing. Uh, phasing plan, uh, it's really hard to see here, the, the dashed lines that are there, but they, um, do want to have the option of, of completing these in phases. Uh, that could be for a number of reasons, that could be for, you know, funding or, or for financial reasons, it could be for, um, someone have lots to different builders, um, with all the interests that they have. But the only thing with the phasing plan is we want to make sure that, they make sure that they have two points of ingress and egress at all times, um, as they're completing those phases. And then they'll just continue working with the engineer and, um, the fire chief on, on that phasing plan. If it changes.
Where are we, Arrowhead Trail on that? Is that, that lines are way out there a little bit?
So Arrowhead Trail is like through that chart. So it says phases five through seven, it's diagonal through that chart. So there is some property, so that triangle, and I don't have my pointer, so I apologize. Oh, maybe I've got one here. So there is a little triangular piece here that's owned by, the last name is Smith. Um, it's, it's just a very small parcel, I mean, you've got Arrowhead Trail that comes here, and then this property off here is owned by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. All that area around there.
I guess, I was looking at that one there, it was kind of like a flaglet, kind of concerned as to why it was seen in the last.
Yeah, so there is a flaglet there, um, the parcels, um, with them not punching a road, I, we wanted to make sure that there were some roads punched through to allow for a, you know, for future connectivity. Um, but in this location, this parcel, which is mentioned, is, is quite small, does have frontage on Arrowhead Trail, and then we do have other connection points. And then as the applicants have had challenges with designing around wetlands, um, that is something that, uh, we will see with all developments in this area, including the church, um, property. um, that is something that, uh, we will see with all developments in this area, including the church, um, properties. They have quite a bit of wetlands, um, area that they'll need to design around and to preserve. So items of consideration, um, so with the preliminary and final flat, um, there's, there's still some items we need to work through, but, um, staff felt that comfortable with, uh, presenting the preliminary and final flat to the city council for approval. Uh, we'll still need to refine a few things and, uh, of course they'll have to be all addressed in, um, a development agreement. And so that will come to you at a subsequent meeting, but we do have a great template because we've already created a development agreement for, um, phases one through four. And so we'll just modify that to include, um, anything that might be different, um, with phases five through seven. But, um, the project layout and design is, is consistent with the conceptual layout that has been, um, discussed with the council, um, for, for two years now, you know, different iterations of that. Um, but they are requesting a couple of modifications, the first one is a modified street cross-section, um, in two locations. One is for, excuse me, the wetland crossings, there's two of them, and then one for the road that goes along the wetland area. So what is being proposed is that these crossings here be reduced down to twenty-four, I believe. I'm actually a little confused.
Is the other side?
The asphalt here.
And that comes from the, the.
So that is to, yeah, try to minim- minimize the impact on those wetland areas. And so it is requested that they reduce these, and then this road here that comes along the open space area, there's only lots on one side of the street. And so staff is supportive of this, of this change, and that is to reduce this down to thirty feet of asphalt instead of forty feet of asphalt. Um, especially where you only have homes on one side of the road. And so, um, that was something that was discussed very early on with the applicants, um, of, of wanting to see that change in order to preserve that wetland corridor and that open space corridor as an amenity to the development, rather than, um, hiding it in the backyards.
Okay.
Definitely given public safety access and for a number of other reasons.
So, so go back one slide real quick. I just, I know that in one of the previous council meetings, we've talked about adopting a grid system in the city. And I, and I think this fits that exception to where they've tried really hard to keep it in a grid, and I appreciate that, working within the wetlands. So, and, and we're so far in, I just kinda wanna make sure that that's, that's noted, that if we have somebody come in in, in a couple of months, why wasn't this addressed? I, I think it looks like it's got the grid system down, and I'm not gonna ruffle feathers at this point in time, I'm just confirming that that, that was discussed and that we're working towards that, and this is one that's.
And that is a good point.
I'm actually gonna bring up the same thing, like, I'm not gonna change things now, 'cause we're already down the road.
Right.
And, and it looks good, but I, I do think it's important that we, for future developments and that, that grid system is important.
I, I think that, I think that was also talked about at the time, that there are going to be some limited exceptions because of wetland issues and different things.
Yeah, and I think, I think even some of the council members provided that direction to staff when we had that discussion on the grid.
Yeah.
Is that there are going to be instances where the grid will not work, whether it's because of topography or, you know, waterways and wetlands and things like that. So we'll definitely, um, you know, as we move to refining our ordinance with the grid, those, those ones definitely need to be, um, addressed in the order. So it's very clear under what, you know, circumstances will not have those exceptions. Any other questions before I move on?
No, I, I think that looks good, I, I mean, I could see places where we could punch roads out and make it more like a grid, but you'd probably lose four building lots in the process, and it's just, at this point in time, it's hard to say what's gonna go in next to them. Now, that little triangle piece of the Smiths might end up being a, a giant grocery store right there, and it's no point in punching a road out there.
There you go, putting rumors out there, no.
That's what Christensen said.
He said it might be.
Well, that's all it takes.
That's not the way it works.
No, but with that, I mean, the applicant also did look, I mean, that was one of the things that we had requested them to look at is, is what developmental potential the adjoining properties have. And actually, when you look at the Bamberger Ranch, this is a plan that Dale gets church put together, they show a big open space area. And, I mean, because they haven't got into all of the level of detail that the applicants have, uh, and they may find that there's gonna be another row of homes there. But currently on that plan and looking at the aerials and, and seeing just sort of the, the design of, of those wetland areas, um, you know, punching another road through may just be punching a road into that whole area, so.
And that, and that wetland, that little finger down there in the bottom left corner may be a good spot for a road and relocate the wetlands somewhere else in the future, if that's what they need to make the grid work, so. I'm okay with this, I just wanna, on the record, that we're aware of.
No, all great comments and suggestions, okay. So, um, so tonight with the preliminary plan and the final flat, they are also asking for those modifications. So the modification in the street cross-section and then also the RV parking and storage. Instead of having an RV parking, storage area, they are wanting to be, they want five through seven to be consistent with phases, you know, one through four. And as well as with phases one through three, which is a single-family, they're just gonna have the wider, or the, the wider side, garage side setback in order to accommodate those, uh, vehicles, um, at some point in the future with the future homeowner. Phasing plan, as I mentioned, two points fingers and egress, we'll continue work back as they, um, modi- if they modify their phasing plan. And then housing product would be similar to that, that was proposed with phases one through three. Amenities, uh, they have the open space area that runs along, so you not only have the wetland area, the open space there, but you're gonna have, uh, more of like a linear park that goes along there, some open space areas and, and a trail system that runs through that. And then compliance with city regulations, as I mentioned, applicant's been working with staff on, on addressing all of those requirements, and they will be taking care of that at the appropriate time, either before recordation or prior to the commencement. And then.
Do they have an HOA with this?
So they will have an HOA. Yes, so there will be an HOA to take care of those areas and enforce, um, various, uh, conditions of the CCNRs. And then finally, development agreement, which we'll come back to at a subsequent meeting, uh, but we will just refine, uh, phases one through three, um, to address any challenges or, or things that are, that come up with phases five through seven. And I want to say that is just the required approvals, preliminary plan with the modifications, final flat, uh, development agreement in, um, at a subsequent meeting, and then extension of utility, uh, services agreement, just because the applicant has had to do a lot of off-site improvements to get out there, which could benefit other property owners. Um, we do need to address, you know, how reimbursement will occur for those off-site utilities. So public hearing, uh, the required public hearing was completed at the planning commission meeting, um, we did not have any public comment. And so, um, that was pretty straightforward, but a copy of the minutes were included in your packet, so you know what the discussion was between staff and the applicant and the planning commission, as the planning commission made their, um, recommendation. The recommendation was to approve, uh, continued upon staff conditions and including the modifications, uh, to the RV parking as well as to the street cross-section. So tonight, the planning commission, or the city council is, um, looking at preliminary plan and final flat. Um, you can remind it back to staff or the planning commission if you feel like additional information is necessary, or you can affirm it with conditions, or if you feel it is not consistent with the, um, annexation agreement or the conceptual layout, you could deny the request. And then all motions should include findings, um, that indicate reasonable conclusions for the decision.
Well, you're recommending that we accept it as it is, right?
But we, but we are, and I think I even put that in my staff report, and I think it sort of were within that staff is recommending approval because it is consistent with those documents that I had mentioned. And, um, Mayor, it is not a public hearing, but I do know that the, um, applicants are here. I'm not sure if they, if they want to comment on anything, or if you have any questions for them, but.
Council, if you feel like, manito, or we, go ahead, motion and take care.
I just have something for Jill first. So Jill, I was wondering if we could just go back, and, and I'm fine with the RV parking and everything. I wonder if we oughta go back and look at our general plan for RV parking, 'cause it comes up all the time. We oughta look and see what other cities are doing and, and maybe readdress that and see where we are, anyway, that's just a suggestion.
It's definitely a topic that's discussed among the staff often, you know, how to, to address all these big trucks and multiple cars and, and, uh, toys that we have that don't fit the road directly, so, but yeah, we, but we can look out, we can look to other communities too to see how they do that. I know in, in a lot of communities, they have, um, really well organized and functioning HOAs that, that help with the enforcement of that, um, which, um, for whatever reason, we haven't had that success yet. But as we start to get more familiar with HOAs and, or citizens become more, um, aware of HOAs and what the requirements are, hopefully some of that will, we'll see a positive outcome of that, but yes, we'll definitely take that direction and bring something back to you.
Can I say something? For the last speaking, you know how I am about water? And I, I noticed on there that they're gonna put in sod. Have they looked at other kinds of sod that would not take near that amount of water? And, and also the trees that will, I mean, I know there are some that, and, and the brush, you know, the bushes that do not require a lot of water because we need to be thinking down the road about this because it could come for a time where we won't be able to irrigate and keep our grasses green and stuff like that. Especially the more people that come here, the less water we will have to water people's yards. I mean, we like those green grasses, but that takes a lot of water to keep that, that grass green.
Right, I can answer that, I don't know, Dave, can you answer that, or, I don't know if it's something that they considered, but.
We're just hoping to get away with that.
With our landscape architect, we've been looking at, um, different ways to do things, but where we have that trail in this particular area, the, from the trail to the, to the, to the wetlands area, we are putting in native grasses. And we're not putting in a, a big irrigation system. From the trail to the sidewalk, we're doing sod because we want it to look like a park. We want the trail side to the wetlands to look like a nature trail, and the other side to look like, um, an urban trail.
So have we looked at the grass like they have in St. George or Vegas? I know it's not the pretty green stuff that we have, but, you know, you go to Florida, you go to Hawaii, they all have those, well, I mean, it's, it's wet there, but like in, in, in Vegas, they have a different grass than we have because they don't get to water their lawns like we do.
And we are looking at the, the ones that use the least amount of water because our, our goal is not to put in a big irrigation system on that side of the trail. I think we will be addressing it more than, than we realized when we first started. But working through the, the, uh, the process with the landscape architect, that's what we're coming up with, I think it's a good.
And how about the trees, 'cause I know that there, there are trees out there that take very, very little water.
That's true, there are some that are native, some of those aren't that good-looking, um, and they have the kind of bark that isn't child-friendly. But we, we would have some of those trees, but we'd mix them in with some of the other more familiar trees that, that, that are going in that do consume more water. But I think overall, we would be, for open space, we would be putting in the least amount of water, which we're foot of anything we've seen so far.
Well, that's what I'm shooting for, 'cause I, like I said, I keep reading all these different, you know, reports, and it, and it could get to that point. I mean, that, that's a real negative thing to say, but it could really get to the point where people can't water their lawns. They will have water to drink, bathe with, and, you know, do the few things they need to do, but we've gotta cut back. We are a desert, and people do not seem to realize that, that we are a desert.
Theresa, they're just gonna put in Russian olive, so don't have to worry about it.
I don't think we'll get some seed from that.
Thank you for explaining that.
I just wanted to say, I heard a rumor that there was a big grocery store coming in this.
Oh, no. Where did that come from?
Get your lawn to the black and pale lawn.
Somebody better tell the Smiths, I think they're gonna be surprised.
Didn't you say turbot?
Well, the Smiths, not the grocery store, Smiths, the owners of the property.
Okay, Council, we discussed enough, or is there more, more, uh, discussion? Then I guess I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary and final flat approval for phases five, six, and seven of villages at Arrowhead Park. Um, that with the development agreement and extension of utility agreement to come later, uh, substitute staff conditions, and with the modification of the RV parking and the wetland crossings and include findings.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded, uh, calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilman.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Jill. Move on to, uh, number three, uh, appointments to the library board, it's a resolution. Donna, were you gonna talk to us, or, I see Steve.
I'm a very quiet person.
Well, we maybe don't want you to be, okay.
I remember we're talking about library stuff.
I'll take Donna, and you can ask her the questions.
Okay.
But we, uh, I, I thought maybe Steve Southwood could be here, but we have some members of the library board, Donna's here. We're asking that, uh, I think it's pronounced a Pre Martin, and Deborah Kelly be appointed to the library board. There is a resolution to that effect in the packet. You, in the packet was a little bit about each one of them, so unless you have any questions, we recommend you appoint those through the board.
Okay, any discussion?
I think that's pretty straightforward. Yeah. I'd just like to say that, uh, I get to work on the best board in all the city. The library board's pretty fun, and they're doing amazing things. So, anyway, I would like to, uh, make a motion that we approve resolution one, oh, one oh-two, two thousand nineteen, resolution appointing the Pre Martin and Deborah Kelly as library board members on the Payson Library Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, as a motion has been seconded, uh, we'll, uh, do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
One thing, one thing, Mayor, it's just nice to see people step up and volunteer, I just really appreciate that.
Relay that to them, would you please?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good, then it's been relayed firsthand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, moving on, number four, resolution agreement between Payson City and South Utah Valley Electric Service District regarding the depot road.
Dave? Um, Mayor, Council, I just sent this to you on Friday, and after the package had been done, but we've been working with, uh, the attorneys on both sides, our side and SECSD, and we, it looks like we've come to an agreement on this line relocation, move the telephone poles out of the street. And, uh, so, uh, it's been back and forth multiple times, but, uh, we'd asked the council to approve this, and hopefully before the end of the month, we'll have those lines out and moved, and that part will be, be done.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Tell it next round.
I'd like to, I'd like to express my support for that, I, I've been involved in it quite a little bit. It's not, it's not a perfect agreement, it's, uh, what there's gonna take there, and so I think it would be something we need to, we need to do. Any discussion, other than what I said? Okay, I guess I'm ready for a motion.
Make a motion to approve reservation, uh, one to nine, two thousand nineteen, approving the line relocation agreement between Payson City and South Utah Valley Electric Service District regarding the depot road.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and it's been seconded, and I can't remember where I started, or started and stopped, but I'll go with.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, E, other, annual training, Open and Public Meetings Act, and Municipal Officers and Employeesethics Act. Okay, Mark?
Cover this court.
Shortly sweet.
Thought I saw five minutes, it said five minutes on this, didn't it?
We said, we said three.
I, I will try to cover it as quickly as I can, depends on the request, so. We've got annual training, uh, on these things, the legislature's indicated that, um, that open, that meetings being taken by the state, the political subdivisions, that they're open to the public, and that any deliberations be done openly. Uh, the reason we come back every year is because the statute actually requires that the residing officer of the public body shall ensure that, um, that the training happens, and so that's why we're here. We, as a public body and interacting with the council and, and other, um, the commissions and that, I'm. and that, I'm really, I've experienced that everybody tries to follow the law instead of obeying the law. And I appreciate that. Meetings have certain rules they have to follow. As you receive the agendas and that, you'll see that we update them and also, you don't become really involved in that, but if the staff takes care of that for us, there's a public notice website that we publish on and then we have to post it at the appropriate locations in the city. We comply with that as, as every iteration comes about. If there's an emergency, even then, we have to do the best that we can. Even if it's just posting it on the door and out here for an emergency session, that's, that's part of what we would do, but we move forward with those actions. Each meeting requires minutes to be taken. When you approve the minutes from previous meetings, you have to say, seven, seven, in closed meetings, you also have those, you have them by way of recording. You follow the procedures that I've seen as you go into a closed session, you have certain requirements. Before you go into a closed session, you have to have, enter a regular meeting with a form present. Once you enter that meeting, then you have to have a vote to go into a closed session where you have two-thirds of those presents, super majority sometimes is called, and to go into that closed session. Those votes are on the record. Once we go into a closed session, the state requires, the state law requires that we record that session. It is not open to the public and it is not grand law, requestable. It is a protected document. On that, and you've experienced it, for those others that maybe aren't familiar with the law, everybody present and those who aren't present from the body, so if one of you are missing, it would, the recording should indicate so-and-so is not present. And then anybody else is there. So if staff is presenting during the closed meeting, each staff member present would also state their annual position. And you're familiar with that. We do that every time we go into a closed session. We go into closed sessions for purposes that are specifically outlined in the state law. And most of the time when we go into it is to protect confidentiality in, if you will, in the marketplace. We go into a closed session for either purchasing land, leasing land, selling land, those type of things. We cannot and do not take action in a closed session. Nothing can be passed formally. It has to be released to writing and brought back out to, say, council open meeting and taken action at that point in time. And other areas are for personnel type of settings where the, you're looking at competency, professionalism, those type of things of a person, a personnel issue, that type of a setting. There can be strategy sessions for collective bargaining. We don't, we are involved in that. There's also the ability of setting out security systems for our city or for the buildings and that. Those things are intended to be confidential, but those are the type of things that can be discussed in those meetings. What is, is not a meeting, even if there's a form present, is an item that we haven't called as a body. So if you all go to training, it's not our meeting. It's not something that we have called as Payson City Council or as a planning commission. Even though everybody's there and it's worth taking account, there may be a form present, but unless it's officially noticed and you go forward with a vote to have a meeting and you meet all those standards, it's, it's not a, it's not considered a meeting. Discussion of items and things like that, one-on-one or with each other can be done, but once you, you have a form present and you start discussing city items, it should be something that is brought into a public meeting. So I think that's the one thing that is always on our minds, making sure that we're covering the appropriate proper noticing and keeping it open to the public. You can have workshops, you can have field trips. Those are also noticed so that people will have opportunity of attending if they choose. So we have a workshop. And well back, we had a train ride up to Farnington and looked at a development, a retail development that was there, came back. That was noticed so that people could attend if they chose to attend and to ride along on the train and to, there was no convening of a meeting and there were no, there was no action taken or anything like that. But in that type of a setting, you still notice it and invite the public to attend. We do have standards that we've met for electronic meetings. Electronic meetings would be something for, that a person, a council member is not present, but they call in. To be able to do that, you have to have enacted that by performance, we have shown that, and on the agenda, an indication or disclosure to say that at any potential opportunity, a person would call in and it would be an electronic meeting. We follow those procedures and those are the basics of what we need to follow with the open and public meetings and training. She doesn't keep things transparent. Any questions on open and public meetings? The next item is our obligation with the municipal officers and employees ethics act. This covers all appointed officers, elected officers, and employees of the city. The purpose of this part is to, sorry. Is to establish standards of conduct for municipal officers and employees and to require these persons to disclose actual or potential conflicts of interest between their public views and their personal interests. And it does not indicate that they have to recuse themselves or move away from those type of personal and private interests, but it does require them to disclose. If they don't, and if they act inappropriately, it can lead to criminal action. The use of office for personal benefit is prohibited, not only by this statute, but also if it goes into any type of criminal events, criminal charges can be brought. Matter of fact, in several exceptions, the very last section in each of these sections says, if a criminal action is brought, this is void. And the reason being is the case of double jeopardy. If you bring an action with this and it's an administrative type of thing, a person might be able to claim double jeopardy when they are actually doing something that is misdemeanor or a felony. And so the law has protected the cities from that type of a claim. As you go around through it, it'll say, this is all valid except for this exception, as referred to in the criminal code. What's, a personal benefit is an economic benefit that's tantamount to a gift. And the general concept of a gift is something of value. It doesn't have to be monetary value, but if you look at value, they have indicated something less than fifty dollars. There was a time when the legislature was providing jazz tickets a lot of the time and it got to a point where the people decided that you can't even jazz tickets because the value of those usually went beyond fifty dollars. Disclosure or improperly providing private or controlled or protected information to anybody outside of the city, outside of the city structure for personal gain or for the gain if somebody else is prohibited. The furtherance of, further substantially, furthering substantially the officer or employee's personal economic interest or securing special privileges for that, for the officer or the employee or others. As, you take a look at that, they give the example of getting a loan at an interest rate that is reasonably low, to the point where it is truly a benefit rather than, or a gift or an incentive rather than just a normal transaction or receiving something that you haven't paid for, but under normal circumstances, you would have had to have paid for that. It doesn't apply to, as I indicated, non-cumbrity gift having a value of less than fifty dollars, an award publicly presented, so recognition, the recognition of our employee of the year, that type of thing. Those things are totally okay. A bona fide loan or in the ordinary course of business, just fine. A political campaign contribution is no problem. Public disclosure and filing requirements are what really save the day. Anytime you have a personal interest or an economic interest or an entity that is governed by the city through its business licenses or things like that, those all have that conflict interest potential and you need to disclose under the statutes requiring disclosure. I'll come close in just a moment. There's, they differentiate in that those that own the business or the business they have an interest in is regulated by the city or is doing business with the city. Disclosure is mandatory in all of those cases. The way that you disclose it is a sworn statement, which means a notarized statement. I'm headed to notarize those things. Provided to the, it's easily kept on record with the court's office. And it states the name and address of the officer or municipal employee, the names and addresses of persons or businesses, business entities being or to be assisted or in which the appointment or elected official or municipal employee has a substantial interest and its brief description of the transaction. So by, in your case, your bank officer, you indicate that that's the interest you have you're employed by the bank and you are an officer at this, you're present in the bank or whatever, but that needs to be on record and gets opened to the public. Then, once something comes up in a meeting, you also have to disclose that before the discussion of it so that people are aware that you have that type of a conflict. It does not prohibit the interaction, so doing business with somebody that is doing business with the city. And even, I think again, and we've seen the disclosure of people that have come to the financing institution for projects they're doing with the city, that disclosure is sufficient to take it out of concern. And the member of the body does not have to recuse themselves. They, they aren't prohibited from that. They can do that if they, if they choose to do that, but they don't have to and they can go forward it and still vote as if it was a normal situation. There were times also when it's a direct relationship with the city. For example, our former city council member, Scott Phillips, had actually contracted and did projects, construction projects with the city. He had an obligation indicating that in writing and in meetings, and it was in the normal course of the meeting and he did that every time that I was aware of at least. He was eager to do that and did it appropriately.
So, quick question. If you're not an officer but you have some dealings, so for example, not too long ago we approved to go on a joint space with Wilton Elementary School. I work for the school district, but I'm just a lowly peon teacher. That doesn't require any disclosure since I'm not a decision maker at the district level, is that correct?
That is correct. I would, I would suggest that any type of employment or that we do have dealings because I don't know how you're, how far into, into decision-making you go, but we are always...
Where my classroom door ends.
Okay. And in that case, probably not a lot, but we do have dealings and we meet with the school district, credit off. For example, the issue that was brought up this evening regarding putting a flashing light out in front of the high school, that's who we'll be talking with because we'll be collaborating. And so I would always encourage you to disclose something quickly and it's done and over with. Any type of interest in any type of endeavor, and it's anything over ten percent of the business ownership or interest in the business or stock or anything like that. So if I ever have a...
I see my property ties to San Diego school district, so I'm pretty close, I'm sure.
If I have, if I have something that is, you know, I buy old stock in the, in the local gas company and we're regulating them for public utility easements, that probably won't get even on the radar because of the percentage requirement. But the ownership of a secondary business or employees of the city, those type of things, they need to be disclosed and on the record. And for employees, they also need to go through the supervisor so that the supervisor is aware of any type of potential concern there. Not just an interest in or something that is a, that you're doing business with somebody, but if there is some type of a conflict of interest that comes up, that also needs to be disclosed. Part of the potential starts with recommends, they can be taken on to a ethics commission that we are, as a city, we are a member of, here in Utah County. And... And so your peers would hear any complaints that the public might issue against the, any individual. Those type of things are carried forward and we have an interlocal agreement where those things are, are looked at. Again, the last thing is that criminal charges will supersede this and they can go as high felonies and those type of settings. Any questions with that? There should be forms if you need to update that. I believe we have forms that go through that process of putting them on the record.
I don't think anybody's going to answer that question, I might. I think you failed the three-minute test, though.
Sorry.
Who's counting?
So Mayor and Council, at the end, I don't, I do need to ask you to quit the closed session for a few minutes on some bill of state, sell a bill of state, we'll take a couple of minutes.
So do we just, we need a motion to go into closed session?
With the roll call.
Okay. There's a motion?
Second.
Second, starting with Councilwoman.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're in closed session.
We can do it right here, we'll shut off the.